Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The January 17th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of the City of Longview is now called to order. At this time, I would ask that Commissioner Heath Amberlin give us the invocation, remain for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Join me in bowing your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this new year. We pray for your peace and your prosperity in 2023. Lord, we pray for our community, our city of Longview, and that you would bestow your blessings upon us this year. Dear God, we just ask that you guide each of these commissioners' hands and minds in our decisions tonight, that we're able to do your will to make the best decisions for the city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Do you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to build a republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the amendments from the last meeting in December. Has everyone had a chance to look them over? I'll now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. There is a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We've now reached the citizen comment portion of the meeting. This portion, the citizen comment, are comments made other than the public hearing. So if you're here for the public hearing on one of the items on the agenda, this is not the time for you to speak. But if you wish to speak on something else as far as citizen comment is concerned, you may approach and state your name and address the public. Anyone like to speak at the public hearing? I mean, not the public hearing, the citizen comment. I see no one. Okay, we're now on the consent agenda. The items of the consent agenda are plaits that meet the requirements of City of Longview subdivision ordinances. These items will be approved with one vote unless any member, any of the commissioners of the planning and zoning, or any member of the public or the applicant would like an item removed from the consent item and placed on the regular agenda. Would anyone like for an agenda removed from the consent and placed on the regular agenda? I see no one, so I'll entertain a motion, commissioners, to approve the consent item.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Patrick, do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass is unanimous. Okay, now we're moving to the regular agenda. The purpose of the meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and those in opposition to the applications before the commission. Tonight is the first of two public meetings that is required to approve any change of zoning in the city of Longview, and the commission also considers plaits. The procedure that will be followed tonight is that, first of all, we'll have the staff report. After the staff report, we'll ask for the applicant, if they'd like to speak concerning and explain what they're asking for. Then we'll have the general public, those in support, and then those in opposition to the request. If you are part of a large group, which I think we have probably here tonight, we're going to ask that you please appoint a spokesperson, if possible, so that we don't have the same information repeated over and over. And we also ask that anyone who comes and speaks concerning one of the agenda items, please hold it to five minutes. When all of the sides have spoken, then the public hearing will be closed. No further discussion. We'll have a vote, which will be taken by the commission at that time. Zoning requests that are either approved will go forward to the second public hearing, which will be conducted by the City of Longview City Council on February the 9th. We're going to move to item A on the regular agenda. Angela, if you'll read this, please.
Yes, sir. Consider application RP 23-01, Lewis Chapel addition filed by Jose Minjivar to replat approximately .482 acres of Lot 5, Block 1, 2, 2, 0 into three residential lots located at the southwest corner of Oak Street and Smith Drive. So the applicant is requesting to replat one lot, Lot 5, into three residential lots located at the southwest corner of Oak Street and Smith Drive. The applicant has not installed the long side services or provide the security prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, which is required per the UDC Article D, Section 4.13, and Article E, Section 1.08. Staff makes a recommendation to conditionally approve the plat with the following requirements, that the applicant either A, provide the security for the long side services, or installs those long side services. Once that condition is met, the plat would be considered approved. I'd be happy to answer any questions at that, at this time.
Anyone have any questions of Angela at this point? Is the applicant present? If the applicant would like to speak, you're welcome to do so at this time. Since this is a plat, we do not have to have a public hearing on it, so I'll now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With the condition?
Yeah, with the condition.
Thank you.
With the condition. Thank you.
Have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Moving to item B of the regular agenda, Angela?
Thank you.
If you please read the caption.
Yes, sir. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z 23-01 filed by the City of Longview requesting a rezone from General Retail to Two Family Zoning District for approximately 4.235 acres of lots 1 through 5, Block 3, 7, 7, 6 Winchester Park, Number 3, located along Shiree Lane. So the City of Longview is actually requesting a rezone of this neighborhood, which is currently a duplex neighborhood. It is zoned General Retail zoning district. However, the current UDC does not allow for duplexes within General Retail zoning district. Therefore, these properties are considered non-conforming. So in order to correct this, staff is requesting a rezone of these properties to bring them into compliance with the current zoning ordinance. Shiree Lane is classified as a local street and is maintained by the City of Longview, and this type of development is appropriate along this roadway. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding properties. I'd be happy to answer your questions at this time.
So Angela, as I understand it, this is just being done by the city to make sure that we're in compliance with the new guidelines, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody have any questions of the staff at this point? I'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak either for or against it? If so, please come to the podium and please state your name and speak into the microphone. I see none. If there's no questions, then I will now entertain a motion and the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Aye.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Angela, number C.
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z 23-02 filed by the City of Longview requesting a rezone from General Retail to Multi-Family Zoning District for approximately 4.38 acres of lots 1 through 10, Block 3, 7, 7, 7 Winchester Park, Number 2, located along East Sycamore Lane. This zoning change is requested by the City of Longview. Like the previous zoning change, this neighborhood is directly adjacent to this, to Shiree Lane, and is currently a multi-family development. And so staff is requesting that this property be rezoned from General Retail to multifamily so that the zoning matches what is currently out there. East Sycamore Lane is classified as a local street and is maintained by the City of Longview, and this type of development is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future lane use map. I'd be happy to answer your questions at this time.
Okay, this, this street is adjacent to the one that we just approved?
Yes, sir.
And it is cul-de-sac?
Yes, sir.
Also has, I think, residents on every lot?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You have any questions of Angela or any other staff member? I will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak either for or against this? Any additional questions or comments from the commissioners? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
For approval. Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Pass is unanimous. Angela?
Yes, sir.
Item D.
A public hearing will be held to consider application Z 23-03 filed by Cross Development requesting a rezone from General Retail and Single Family 4 to Heavy Commercial for approximately 4.544 acres of Lot 2, Block 1 Liberty Baptist Church addition located at 1500 West Loop 281. So the applicant is requesting a rezone from General Retail and Single Family 4 to Heavy Commercial Zoning District for a property located at 1500 West Loop 281. Caliper Collision is proposing to use this site for major automotive repair, which does require heavy commercial zoning district. Loop 281 is a tech stop roadway and is classified as a principal arterial roadway. This type of use is appropriate along this roadway as long as access management is followed. This site will be sharing a driveway with the adjacent properties. The tract directly to the east of this property was the Dutch Brothers zoning change that y'all saw last year. They did request a specific use permit for a drive-through, and it did not share a property line with the adjacent residential properties. The tract to the east of that received an SGP Ford restaurant with a drive-through window in 2017 with the following stipulations, that an eight-foot-tall solid wood fence be installed along the rear property line, and they maintain a 100-foot easement along the rear property lines where no buildings, parking, or lighting shall be allowed within the easement and where as many trees are preserved as possible. Within that 100-foot easement, they will also provide a 50-foot natural buffer at the rear of the property adjacent to the residential properties. And all of these properties will not have access to the residential street to the rear of this property. All of their access will come off of West Loop 281. Caliper Collision is proposing a one-story building with approximately 16,000 square feet in size. If we go to the site plan, you'll see that they are proposing an eight-foot solid wood fence adjacent to the property's zoned residential with access only from West Loop 281. They are proposing a 75-foot easement where no buildings, parking, or lighting shall be allowed and where as many trees as possible will be preserved. Within that 75-foot easement, they will have a 50-foot natural buffer greenbelt easement. These easements will be directly adjacent to the residential properties. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses. Therefore, it does not constitute spot zoning. If Planning and Zoning Commission makes a recommendation to approve, staff recommends the following stipulations be placed on the zoning change. An eight-foot solid wooden fence adjacent to the residential properties be installed. The 75-foot easement where no buildings, parking, or lighting shall be allowed and where as many trees as possible are preserved. And within that 75-foot easement, a 50-foot natural buffer greenbelt be placed, and no access shall be allowed on Liberty, Liberty Lane. And those conditions, staff makes a recommendation that those conditions be placed if Planning and Zoning Commission were to make a recommendation to approve this zoning change. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
The commissioners have a question for Angela at this time.
Yeah, I got a few. So, okay, Angela, what's the depth of that lot from front to back?
From front to back? I can't remember. Let me, let me look real quick.
The reason I ask, it looks like there's a lot of space that could come towards the loop a little bit, a little bit north, more than, because, and there's a few different numbers on here. I see 100-foot easement and then the 50-foot natural buffer, and then you said a 75-foot easement and a 50-foot natural.
So Caliper Collision's, they're proposing 75-foot. Now, the Brahms tract had 100-foot.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, the lot depth...
If it was 100, they'd still be able to do what they're wanting to do as far as the size of the building, 16,000?
I, I don't know. So that, that would be the applicant that would need to answer that question if they're here.
And... Any other questions of Angela? If not, I'm going to ask that the applicant please step forward to the microphone. Please speak into the microphone.
Yes, thank you, Chairperson and Commissioners. This is, my name is Joe Dell. With Cross Development, the applicant, our address is 4336 Marsh Ridge Road, Carrollton, Texas, 75010. Do we have a site plan to pull up possibly?
Can you pull one up?
Was it part of the packet? I think the question about the distance to the loop, there's a, I think that's all right-of-way. It's not property we can access.
Yeah, no, I knew that. That's why I wanted to know what the...
I was looking at the distance. It looks like you've got about 300 feet of depth, and that's from...
The front property line.
Yeah, that's from the front property line back.
To the rear.
To the rear.
So I think moving the building forward with the drive-out where it has to be going through for shared access, I don't know if we can move forward anymore towards the loop. We have some parking, I wish the site plan was in there. We have some parking towards the front of the loop, and then some parking right in front of the building, and then the building with the parking coming around. I want to make sure that...
Are you saying the 75 wouldn't work for you guys? I mean, that...
75 works.
I mean, that 100 wouldn't?
100 would not. We would lose our entire rear row of parking and in the, within the storage area. And so Caliper Collision needs a certain number of storage spots for cars waiting to be picked up, cars awaiting for parts to be delivered, to be fit back onto the vehicle. So losing that entire back row, which I think is like 30 or 40 parking, storage stalls would be difficult. I, I would, it would very much hinder the ability to operate as a collision center for Caliper Collision. Gosh, I wish we, do y'all have the site plan?
They're going to try to pull up the site plan.
Okay. Is it in your packet, though, the site plan? You have it? Okay. There it is. Great. So it's hard to see, but we have parking stalls all across that rear line where that buffer, that 75-foot buffer comes from the residential to the parking lot of our storage facility. That storage facility will also be enclosed within a fence as well, so not only the eight-foot fence across the rear, at the property line between the residences in our lot, and then actual security fence around the storage lot itself behind the building will, will be fenced also. So no lighting will be, we agree with all the conditions, no lighting back there. We intend to not touch any of the trees in that 75-foot area if we don't have to. I know that Dutch Brothers is building right now. There is a common drainage easement that runs just on the backside of our parking. I believe they're going to correct that swale, so there may be some work in there, but beyond that, it should stay heavily treed like it is today and not, not be impacted by our development at all. And so, I know you said five minutes, I kind of...
You're, you're fine.
I would, I would like to reserve time to answer any questions the community may have after they come up and discuss their...
Do the commissioners have any questions at this point?
It's, it's hard to see from the site plan, but what does, Angela, what does that, that segmented, those two parallel lines that are kind of segmented, they run parallel with the loop and then they turn down south? What are, what is that representing? Is that, that's not the...
Are you talking about the driveway that goes...
Is that what that is, is driveway?
There's like an internal driveway that's shared by the Dutch Brothers and the proposed Brahms and Caliper Collision and the ATB. Is it that one? Is it the one Anna's got her little arrow on right there?
What, what is, that's the buffer.
That's, that's the buffer. So that represents the buffer.
Oh, in the south.
I was asking that, yeah.
Yeah, right here.
So the upper, so the upper segmented line, is that the 100-foot mark? Where's, where is that? Does it, does it show?
75.
It's a 75-foot buffer.
So the furthest north is the 75 feet. Okay, that's why you said you need, okay.
Correct. That once you get to the east property line, if you saw the plat or survey or...
Right.
The Brahms goes another 25 feet for their buffer. I think because of the drive-through lane and the speaker and all of that, that was involved with that from the Brahms hearing, my understanding was a requirement for the 100-foot.
Yeah.
We, so a little bit about Caliber, it's not your mom and dad, no, mom and pop body shop anymore. They don't beat the inside anymore. It's pretty much takeoff replace. So no pounding of metal or anything like that. There are conditioned shops, so all the work is done inside the shop with doors closed, and there's only two doors on the entire shop to get the cars in and out.
Yeah.
Operate from 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, so when most people are at work, no after-hours work. And then lighting minimal, really just for security in the storage yard, so we don't even need as many street lights or pole lights that you would normally see on a retail-type development. So lighting will be minimal as well, and shielded, if need to be shielded, we can shield it also. But I think with the 75-foot buffer, keeping as many trees back there as possibly can and untouched, you know, I think the only thing we'll have to do is get through there to build the eight-foot fence, which may prove challenging, but we're willing to do it if we need to, to try to maintain that, that screen there as well. I honestly think the trees themselves are going to keep the neighbors from seeing anything beyond that 75-foot buffer.
Can that be, can that be more than eight-foot?
We can build a 10-foot. It just, you start worrying about, I would worry about how that would look long-term, even built correctly, they tend to, with winds and...
Where is the placement of that, that fence, that privacy fence? Is that, if that furthest north line is 75 feet, where, where do you plan on it?
Based on these plans, the, the fence is going to be right on the property line. So if you put it...
Okay, right there.
Yeah, because if you put it in the buffer, then you've got a no man's land, and then who, who maintains all that area and the trash gets in there and...
Well, Caliber will maintain the entire four acres. That's part of their, their lease with us will be to maintain everything. So mow, trash pickup, maintained detention basins, that'll be a joint agreement between Dutch Brothers and Brahms and us because it's a joint pond that's going there. So, but if we want the 10-foot fence on the back of the parking lot to shield, we'll put an access gate in for being able to get back there and clean up the, the buffer area if we need to. So right now, it's drawn on that rear property line, which makes sense, but is also, would be a challenge being so heavily treed back there. With existing six fences too back there, a lot of times you have trees that end up growing up between and weeds end up growing up between, it becomes very impossible to clean that up. So along the property or the parking lot would be a better location for eight-foot or a 10-foot fence to help buffer that as well, and we're completely open to that. And so, and would, answer any questions that come up after as well.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
I got a quick question of Angela. So what's the current setback requirements of General Retail as it stands now?
General Retail, the setbacks are 25 feet from the property line on the front.
So this is, this is changing it from 25 to 75 is the recommendation from City?
Oh, yeah. So the recommendation for us is on, so for the buffer on the rear, we will, would only require 10-foot on the rear.
Okay, so it's going from 10 to 75.
Yes, it's going from 10 to 75.
And then the second question is, you know, if we look at it as recommended, you know, does that give flexibility for that fence to be on the property line or on, you know, on the concrete, you know?
So if y'all are going to make a stipu, I wouldn't make that stipulation where you would place that fence. If you're not going to place it on the property line and you want to pay, place it right on the back of the, the pavement where the parking is, I wouldn't make that suggestion as a, I wouldn't make that a condition.
It's the ordinance.
Yes. Because our...
Is it on the property?
Yes, our, our ordinance requires it on the property line.
Okay, that, that was my question, because it, it just says a solid fence, it doesn't necessarily, okay. Okay, that was my question.
Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, you're subject to recall.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing. First of all, is there anyone who would like to come and speak in favor of the proposal? If so, come to the podium, state your name. I see no one that wants to speak in favor. Is there any opposition to the request? If we have anyone in opposition, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and please speak into the microphone so we can hear you.
Hi, Michael Wilcox, 1403 Tiffany Lane, property owner, that this rezoning is affecting. Main concern is the noise decibel that I'll be hearing on a daily basis. The buffer, the privacy, I'm sitting there watching the construction going on right now. The 75-foot green buffer yard talking about, I, I can see everything clear as day through my backyard. My back of my house is full of windows. Privacy is a very big issue with two kids in my house right now with me. Very concerned about that. I see retention pond, is that what I'm looking at right there? Yes, okay. Retention pond, so my house is the bottom of this hill. That concerns me on drainage, on drainage, which is another issue that doesn't contain the rezoning, I don't think, but noise decibel, privacy, and property value of my lot. Very concerned about all those. I know I have some constituents with me right here from my neighborhood, they also have the same concerns. They're probably going to get up and talk, but...
Michael, how many houses does that affect on going, going west on Tiffany? On that north side of Tiffany?
Four? Four, five? Five?
Okay. I couldn't remember how far I went down.
There's also...
Would any of those concerns be different if it was still General Retail and we had another Dutch Brothers that was doing it 10 feet from the property line?
If it was General Retail, I, I probably wouldn't have the same concerns. No, no, I wouldn't have. I would...
Let me piggyback off that. So, looking at it the way it would be now, just so all you guys know, and you probably already know this, but just, if it's 10 feet and somebody puts a McDonald's there...
Sure.
And, and they're coming around the drive-through behind the deal as opposed to just a fence and not seeing any movement. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking of it as a property owner, what would I want behind me?
Understood.
You know?
Understood.
What are y'all's, you know, thoughts on that? Because you know, it, the other two didn't have to be rezoned because of, you know, Dutch Brothers and if that's what ends up, I think Dutch Brothers is definitely, but the other one was Brahms or something?
Yeah, understood. Understood. Again, the noise level associated with a body shop, the air tools, the, I'm sure y'all understand, I mean, the impacts going on on a daily basis, concerned about that. And again, privacy. Privacy, looking at this plan and seeing what's happening right now and, yeah.
Is, is that retention plan, is that part, is that the retention pond, sorry, is that part of the new site plan or is that already existing?
That's, that has to exist.
Do we have water shed issues now? How does the water, how are you affected by water?
Yeah, yeah. The water, the water issue is I catch all the water from the houses up from me. There's a pipeline that runs in between me and...
Flood plane.
The new building, and I catch all that, catch all the water into my yard and behind me.
Yeah, and I don't think there's currently a detention pond there, but there's flood plain down kind of by this gentleman's home.
Yes.
And I think they're proposing that, I believe we can talk to that, the gentleman that's representing Cross, but I believe that's a proposed detention pond. that's representing Cross, but I believe that's a proposed detention pond. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition, please come to the forward.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk tonight. My name's Mike Smith, my wife and Suzanne and I live at 1304 Tiffany Lane. We've been residents of Wildwood for about 15 years now. Really, I just, for some reason, I knew this.
Please get closer to the mic.
I'm sorry, I, I knew this was coming up, I did not realize until later today or earlier today that this was a consideration to rezone this to heavy commercial. That's really more of a concern to me there. Mr. Wilcox pointed out a lot of things that, you know, do concern me, the noise, the lighting, the privacy, the drainage, all those kind of things are, are considerations for all of us in Wildwood. Heavy commercial, what all does that entail? What kind of door does that open for future use? If the body shop for some reason decides to vacate that property down the road, you know, what are we looking at potentially being there if this is, because once that door's open, it can't be closed. And so, that's a concern. There are some residents here, there's also a lot of us not here tonight, that, you know, wanted to be able to come and speak for one reason or another, that are against this. So I just kind of wanted to come and let you know that most of the residents, if not all the residents of, of that part of Wildwood most especially, would be against something like this. And so, just that y'all would take that into consideration when you make your vote tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else like to approach the mic and speak, please?
Good evening, Debbie Ochoa at 1408 Tiffany Lane, we're at the end of the cul-de-sac, and like Mr. Wilcox and the other gentlemen, we have the exact same concerns. The gentleman speaking earlier on behalf of Cross said that they should be keeping a lot of the trees, but just in the last day or so, I mean, they're snap, the trees are snapping off left and right, and we can see clearly everything that's going on over there, everything. So in order to have a natural buffer between their business and our properties would take years to establish. You can see right over an eight-foot fence, and we're really concerned, not only for privacy and noise pollution, but the value of our properties. I, I voiced the same exact concerns these other two gentlemen did, and we are clearly opposed.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Please approach the mic.
Aaron Jones, I'm at 1211 Tiffany Lane, so I'm not directly affected by this. I'm really just trying to get some questions answered. Are there limitations? So I'm right behind the Toyota dealership right now, and I can tell you that, that lighting from the Toyota dealership dramatically affects the value of our property. So, I'm very curious of what the lighting plan is for this property. So, I'd, I'd like to know what that's going to do to my neighbors. So, I'm, I'm saying lighting that is directed back towards the neighborhood is a dramatic effect. I'm also curious, with the, with the changes, are there any limitations to the decibel levels that are going to be measured? And if there are, how is it quantified? And how is anyone going to ever know if the impact wrenches that they're going to be using constantly are creating enough? Because I am behind a facility that has impact wrenches going constantly, and it is deafening occasionally out there. So, hoping that all my neighbors are hearing this, you don't want a shop behind your house. So, passing that on, making sure everybody's hearing that. We have the situation right down the street. That was, that occurred well before I moved into the neighborhood, but from this point forward, everyone in the neighborhood needs to make sure you're, you're hearing me. It is significant and it is loud, and the lighting is a major issue. So, lumen measurements, some way to quantify what the decibels that the neighborhood is going to be exposed to, we would really, really like some information on it. So far, I haven't seen enough information at all to even be, have an idea of what the building's going to look like, what the fencing's going to look like, I'd like to know some detail here. I know you said it's an eight-foot wooden fence, but I've got an eight-foot wooden fence that I put up myself on this, and I'm saying that is not enough to cut the volume. So, passing it on, making sure that everyone understands there are real concerns in the neighborhood, and I am really hopeful that more information will be provided to the community on this.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition, please approach the mic. Would the applicant like to come forward and answer any of their questions, please?
Yes, thank you. So, appreciate the comments and the concerns, same ones we hear pretty regularly. I'll try to go just kind of step by step on what I heard from Mr. Wilcox to Mr. Smith to Ms. Ochella to Mr. Jones. So, noise, privacy, value, current use drainage, the pond that's shown, I believe is part of Dutch Brothers, overall drainage improvements. I think they are actually constructing the pond, it's not there yet. With that, the pond will have a specific outfall that will follow the contours down into the drainage basin, which will then correct downstream. I don't, our, what we have to hold to, and I'm assuming the city engineer would say the same thing if they're here, we have to hold to a net zero runoff from our system before it enters into the storm system beyond what our property is. So, all those calculations, we aren't in design yet, we're really here just for the rezone. If the rezone gets approved, then we'll move into full design, where full plans will be drawn with elevations and grading and spot grades of all the different spots, lighting plans that show candle power for each light that's going to be installed and shows which way they go, so as it dissipates out, it shows the candle foot power, or the candle power as it goes beyond the property. I would tell you, most of these lights, so, from a property value, from a noise, from a drainage, noise is all done inside the building. We have noise studies from Caliber's that are operating right now that show what the decibel level is, much lower than what most people anticipate. Comparing to the Toyota shop, I don't know what the Toyota shop is, they could be a repair shop that does oil changes, tire changes, things like that with bay doors open, and so that could greatly impact a lot more sound shedding to the neighborhood than what a Caliber Collision's going to produce inside their insulated building, air-conditioned shop with doors closed. They only operate eight to five. I think current zoning has several uses that would allow for much later operation of businesses and much less, uh, buffer zones required, in which I think would, any retail, any restaurant, any type of retail establishment, the current zoning could stay open until 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night potentially, if it's within the zoning that's permitted, that doesn't even have to come through a public hearing. So, what you guys have to be able to do, and we do in the rezone, is you can put specific stipulations to things like the use. It can be a Caliber Collision, as long as it's a heavy use, and I've seen this in the past in other cities, it, it may or may not be in your ordinance, allows you to put a sunset clause. If Caliber stops operating and no other subsidiary of Caliber, like a body shop, opens up within a certain amount of time, the zoning can, can revamp back to a lighter use potentially. Not sure if that's in UDC or not for you guys, but.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, that's not something we do here.
I can tell you that Caliber Collision is, they're the largest body shop in the country. They take being part of a community very serious. They give back to the community in many ways through fundraisers and foundations and just, they're a great neighbor. I do see the concern for the sounds, for the noise, for the light pollution, all very easily mitigated by how Caliber operates on a day-to-day basis, Monday through Friday, eight to five. They're open on weekends, unlike the Brahms, unlike the Dutch Brothers, that's going to be running cars through till 10 o'clock at night or later, with a lot more lighting at the Toyota shop than there would be here, because they're protecting new cars all around the building. So, again, we're, we're looking at minimal lighting, just enough to secure the cars that are within the secure fence. And so, planting trees in the buffer, if trees are dying and they're falling over and we want more trees back there, we can plant some more trees that will grow up, we can plant fast-growing junipers that will grow up really quick, really fast, and really big to screen if we need to in that buffer as well. Really, whatever we need to do to mitigate concerns, and I understand there's a level of, can you really mitigate it? For the most part, I think you can, but I think if we came in with a use under the current zoning, we, we'd pop right into building permits and could build whatever would be allowed within that zoning. And not that we're going to do that, our goal is to build a Caliber Collision here at this location. And so, to speak to property values, look, I own a home in a neighborhood, I've got retail and stuff around me, I'm always worried about my property value as well. But the zoning's been in place here a long time, and if your property value's going to be affected by zoning, it typically is affected by now. In the community I live in, Sherman, Texas, almost exact same size as Longview, well, maybe a little smaller, but it's the same concerns, and we have the same concerns. And I come to meetings when they're going to build something near me, and it's the same thing, but I also understand, you know, we're in development and we're in a community that's growing, and, and so, Longview is a great community that's growing, and you're attracting new businesses, and, and it's a good thing. But I do see concerns, and hear concerns from the neighborhood as well. So, the only question I had, and I didn't ask it earlier, was Liberty Lane, so that, that will never go through, like, the city's not going to say one day, hey, we want to run Liberty Lane to 281.
No.
Okay, great, so, perfect. That, that was always in the back of my head, being a city street, could it potentially be shoved through one day? So if not, that, that, that's good. But, open to answer any other questions, I think I've hit all the bullet points that I wrote down, but would appreciate your support tonight for the rezone.
Do you all have another location here in, in Longview, or is that?
I think they did an acquisition of an existing body shop, which, those are different because they don't change anything, they just come in and continue to operate. This is a new build, and so it's going to be all the way, brand-new equipment, brand-new, you know, compressors and everything that's going to be. It's a single compressor in a compressor area, it's also screened and shielded, so it's, it's the only thing outside that would make any sound would be an air compressor, and it's not, it's not the pancake air compressors you have in your garage, it seemed deafening loud, it's a well-oiled, high-efficiency compressor. So, the, I think that's.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Answers to questions.
Angela, could you go back through the stipulations that go with this rezone?
The stipu, the stipulations that staff is recommending if.
Yes.
Okay. So the stipulations would be that an eight-foot solid wooden fence be placed adjacent to the residential properties, a 75-foot easement where no buildings, parking, or lighting would be allowed, and where as many trees as possible are preserved, a 50-foot natural buffer greenbelt easement within the 75-foot easement be placed, and no access from Liberty Lane.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any of the commissioners have any other questions of any one? Here none, no additional questions or comments, I'll close the public hearing. Now, now entertain a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to approve as, with the stipulations as outlined.
Have a motion to approve with the stipulations as outlined? Do I have a second? I'll second. Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Does pass, see, wait a minute, let's have a show of hands to make sure. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All opposed? Does pass. Did you get to count, Angela?
Yes, sir, we did.
Okay. We appreciate it, appreciate your attendance here, and, so we're now going to item E of the regular agenda. Angela, if you'll please read the.
Yes, sir. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z23-04, filed by DS, DSF Partners requesting a rezone from agriculture to single-family four for approximately 28.861 acres of abstract 186 Dolores Sanchez survey tract one and tract 10.02, section five, located on the east side of Gilmer Road, south of Burke's Road. So the applicant is requesting a rezone of approximately 20 acres from agriculture to single-family four. The applicant would like to develop a neighborhood of single-family homes. As stated previously in a lot of my zoning cases, when, when the city annexes, or when property is annexed into the city limits, it comes in as agricultural, and so, when property is developed, it, it requires a rezone. Gilmer Road is a tech stop roadway and is classified as a principal arterial roadway. This type of development is appropriate as long as access management is followed. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any question of Angela?
But, single-family four, that's minimum 1,200 square feet?
Yes, ma'am, for, for the homes, yes.
Is the applicant present? If so, would you please come forward and speak on the request?
Yes, my name's John Bull, I live at 1100 Lincoln Drive in Longview, and, like Angela said, the, the zoning in the subdivision, single-family that we're looking to put here is consistent with other neighborhoods in the area. As you can see, is that McGrill Place, SF4?
Yes.
Right down there. So, happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, how many are you putting in there? Approximately how many houses?
The preliminary concept would be multi-phase, the first phase would be like 19 lots, and I think the total was somewhere around 70 lots is what we could fit in there. I just did a density study.
So, based on the number of lots he's proposed, he's required at least two.
Yeah, so, our initial layout has two going to Gilmer Road. And the first one would be right adjacent, right across from Greg Tech's, same, same intersection.
Just out of curiosity, is this going to be a gated community or not?
No, will not be gated.
Any, any questions, commissioners? Seeing none, thank you, sir. I'll open the public hearing, is there anyone in support of the request? If so, please come forward. Any opposition to the request, please come forward. Seeing none, I close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Have a motion to approve, take your choice, got three of them. Do I hear a second?
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, passes by unanimous. Item F, Angela?
Thank you. Public hearing will be held to consider PD 2302, filed by Samuel M. Skipper, requesting a rezone of approximately 1.23 acres of lot, 24 block 1109 Evans Hill Estates, or Evans Hills Estates, from planned development PD 03-2, to planned development for a dance studio situated at the northeast corner of McCann Ru, Road and Ruth Lynn Drive, addressed as 29, 319 Ruth Lynn Drive. So the applicant is requesting a rezone from a previous planned development PD 03-02, which was for a strip center, to planned development for a dance studio located at this northeast corner of McCann Road and Ruth Lynn Drive. In 2003, this property was rezoned to a planned development for general retail for a shopping center with limited uses permitted in office and neighborhood services zoning district. It excluded a self-service fueling station at that time. Conditions for the planned development included an eight-foot masonry fence wall as part of the retail development, along with, along the east property line, adjacent to the residentially zoned properties. Additional landscaping, including a 60-foot bed to be located directly across from Sheffield, and a right out, in and right out driveway on Ruth Lynn, so those were the stipulations in the previous planned development. The applicant is proposing to construct a one-story, 9,000-square-foot dance studio with a parking that will meet the UDC requirements. They are proposing an eight-foot fence along the east property line, and they're also proposing a. a driveway onto Ruthlin that is a full-blown driveway. The developer will meet all of City of Longview's codes through the development process. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the surrounding uses, therefore it does not constitute spot zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Angela, are sidewalks going to be required in there as part of the comprehensive plan?
Yes, sir, they will be.
Okay, I just didn't see it in here.
Yeah.
Is that going to be McCann or just for, just for a plan?
Both.
Both?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is the applicant present?
Thank you. My name is Travis Crafton, I work for Johnson &amp; Pace Incorporated. Our work address is 1201 West Loop 281, Longview, Texas 75604. Thank you for having us this evening, as Ms. Joy described, proposing a 9,000-square-foot dance studio with adequate parking, and we will meet City of Longview Unified Development Code. And the property owner's not present, but the owners of the dance studio, East Texas Dance Company, are present if there are any specific questions that we need to answer. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners have any questions of the applicant or the city, the one? Thank you, sir, we'll call you back if we need you. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone in support of the request that would like to come forward? Seeing none, is there any opposition to the requests? Please come forward, please state your name and address. I see none. Any additional questions or comments from the commissioners? I'll now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, pass unanimously. The last item on the agenda is the staff update. Angela, will you please give us an update?
Yes, sir, all zoning items that went before council in January were approved.
Everything approved?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, gentlemen and lady? Okay, this concludes our meeting and we are adjourned. Thank y'all.